Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Radnor Township School Board to discuss Ithion Elementary School. Today is February 18th, 2025. As is standard with our board meetings, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I have been asked to tell people, I feel like I'm being thrown under the bus here, that the power's back on at the high school. So if you were hoping for another virtual day, sorry. But thank you very much to all of the parents and teachers and administrators and staff who handled that last minute change of plans very well this morning. And thank you to Pico for flipping the power switch this evening. I'm not going to report on executive sessions. We'll do that in the regular meeting of the board next week. Is there any public comment this evening? Public comment at a special board meeting is restricted to the topic of the board meeting. Okay, seeing none, I am going to turn this over to Mr. Morris. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. So as we spoke back in the January Facilities Committee meeting, this evening we're going to give a very comprehensive update on Ithion Elementary School. So I'd like to take a minute to introduce a few people who are going to head off that conversation and presentation. Tonight, we have Steve Barrens from Breslin Architecture, Walt Tac from Site Logic, our construction management, and Damian Spar also with Site Logic.
Welcome, gentlemen. All familiar faces. Good to see you.
All right. So we have five key elements of tonight's presentation that the team is going to go over, including some upcoming board decision-making dates, an update on the schedule where we are with permitting and breaking ground, the construction phasing plan, which some have seen already and was presented to the township land development last month, a project update, as well as the construction cost estimate, and information about an early demolition package. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to the presenting team.
Can I just ask for clarification? Is it helpful to you if you just give the presentation and we save questions to the end? I think that's usually simplest unless there's something you don't understand. I think it'll keep things flowing more smoothly if we have the presentation first.
Good evening. I'm Damian Spar and I'm going to lead the presentation off. The first couple of slides are some introductory slides for us, and Mr. Morris has gone over the agenda relatively well. The next slide will show you that agenda. And the first thing that we're going to be talking about, I believe, is the upcoming board meeting decision dates. Importantly, and most boards like to know this, so we want to make sure that we explain it, is as you move down the path to making these decisions about spending money on facilities, where are our points where we have decisions? And if we don't want to proceed or we want to proceed differently, where are they? So what we have in front of us are, in March, authorizing an early demolition project. We're going to outline that for you tonight. That project really needs to happen regardless of when or anything about the Ithion site. So basically, that's something that can be done early with no fear that it doesn't need to be done at all, and that's not a huge expenditure. The bigger expenditures come, and in fact, that gets authorized for bid in March, but authorized for approval in May. The current schedule is for authorization to release the full project to bid in June. So the March and May meetings, I think, are relatively uneventful. You'll have that explained to you tonight. The June board meeting, if for some reason we got to June and we said, we need to hold up, there's a place to pause. Importantly, in August, that's when you would vote to proceed, and that's when you would vote to spend a significant amount of money. And that's, that August board meeting is the real last stop, the stop point that you would potentially have. So we made the slides so that you could easily see those upcoming decision points. March and May not being really that significant at all, but the big ones being going out to bid in June and authorizing construction contracts in August.
I'm sorry, Steve. Do you want to, as we get through these renderings, do you want to just take a minute to describe what this view is?
Happy to do so. Thank you. While we're talking about the nuts and bolts of the project, we want to, we've interspersed some renderings. These are updated images that have been developed as part of the design, as it is completing, and just a vehicle to help us to remember what the goal is here with all of this work. This is a perspective view from the main lobby of the building, looking at what will be an open two-story space with a stair, communicating stair within that. And here's a good view of how the building looks out to the landscape, and that's been a common theme and speaking towards the biophilic nature of engaging with the landscape and natural views to the outside. So you'll see a few rendering sprinkled through here as we continue the conversation.
The next portion of the agenda is a schedule update, and it's important to understand that as we have been working through our design schedule, you know, we've come across things that have impacted it. And I'm going to be the first person to say, as I sit here, and those of you that may have been involved in the interview process will remember, I had my hand up and I said, "This pre-construction and design and permitting schedule seems awfully long to me." Well, guess what? It probably wasn't long enough. And so some of the things that we've run into are not only our understanding of the local municipality's permitting process, which we saw for the high school, which is taking longer through this process, and I think it's taking longer as a result of some thoughtful consideration. Later on, you'll see that even we've been working with the township and we've actually avoided some costs because of our collaboration with the township. But that was not something that the team envisioned at the start, based upon our experience, not only with the high school project through the Breslin team, but my personal experience at going through projects, even at places locally that take some time. So we have this process, and it's also had other impacts from the sewage planning module. What was required was a study of the existing storm sewer.
Sanitary.
Sanitary sewer, thank you, for inflow and infiltration. This means, is the sanitary sewer taking in water from rain leaders and things like that, or are there broken pipes and it's coming in from the earth? Why are we getting more sanitary flow than we should get? I have, this is the second project in my career I've seen this on. So this showed up. Now we have to monitor it. Well, we can't monitor it if it's not raining, and it didn't rain for a long time. And we actually had an impact of closer to three than two months there. And some of these are overlapping. We had traffic analysis impact, which happens from time to time. We talked a little bit about the land development process, and that's reflected in the current schedule. We are working through the NPDES, which is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. That work, we kind of expect to have issues from time to time. And we also are working through the sewer module, and I think if Mr. Barrens needs to elaborate, he can. At the beginning of the job, we had to make a decision whether we were going to ask for an exception to going through the process or going through the process. And we actually, I think we asked for the exception and we got rejected for, it would have been quite simple if we could have gotten the exception. And sometimes those are granted, so you almost have to ask. But doing one then the other in that series can have an impact, and it did impact us. We also were put off by some, working with the Shade Tree Commission by a month, but we thought it was important to delineate some of the things that we've been running into, really with the permitting process, and offer really explanations, not excuses. There are things that we're going to talk about tonight where we're putting our hand up and saying, "This is unusual to us, and we didn't see that." And I'm the first person to say, I sat in a room with everybody and I said, "I don't think that it's going to take this much time." Mrs. Stern is smiling at me, and I know that part of it is because she said to us several times, "This may take longer," and I think that was a good point to her, even though a lot of this stuff, that was part of what she was referencing, part of this, and was absolutely right. As we got into this, some of this other stuff was outside of that. But Mrs. Stern, I did want to recognize, you did say that for sure. So the next slide shows our typical update that is showing us where we are now. Red is some of these major timeframes. So we've basically finished construction documents. We are looking for a release for bid in June, as you saw before, bidding in June and July, contract award, and issue notices to award in August, and then later in August, a notice to proceed. That notice to proceed says, "Go start procuring. You're going to be able to work on site really starting in October," and you can see that a few lines down. This doesn't change where we end our work. That's moved around a little bit, and we're starting in, starting this time of year is working just fine for the way that we have it scheduled. The next slide shows some ongoing challenges, and then after this, we're going to talk about the advantages that the schedule has with it. Ongoing challenges, I've kind of alluded to, we're waiting to work through the sewage module approval. The good news and the bad news are both that it's with Department of Environmental Protection. That can be a place where things get stuck. The good news is Site Logic has a lot of, has some former DEP folks, and we're able to unstick things from time to time should they need it. So I feel better than I've ever felt in my career about saying something's with DEP, and if we really need to make some phone calls, we may be able to get some good action there. The conservation district permit for that NPDES, we kind of can rely on where that is, and I think we've seen letters of completeness now for our administrative submittals, and that's moving the way that it should be. I think that we have a good view on the land development process now. I'm going to take a minute to talk about the way that we see things in construction. When we're doing design, the further away we are from either going out to bid or starting our project, the fogier it is. And the closer we get, the more that fog burns off and the clearer we can see. We're at a place we can see very clearly, and we weren't at a place where we could see that clearly even back at design development. So we're feeling that the schedule that we have has represented that. It would be easy to say, "Boy, is this going to hold?" And I'm telling you, while we don't know everything that we don't know, or some other things can happen, we feel pretty confident in seeing what we're seeing now because we have that clarity. The last line item here is related to work at Sprow Road. If we are required to do that, we can bifurcate that from the major project and have that on a separate track, and it won't hold us up from the rest of the work. It would be a question of how much do we have to spend on it? We have $250,000, I think, in soft costs to potentially put toward that, but that's a question that we have, if you go to the next slide. The advantages, we're capturing higher numbers for Act 34 by waiting past this July to award contracts. We're doing additional quality control, quality assurance on the bid documents. The schedule maintains the demolition of the existing building over the summer months. We liked that before. We visited other options. We rethought it, and we're back to that, and we like the way that sits, as it sits now. We have the ability to get ahead with things like preparing color schedules. We have the ability to present the design again to the community as we continue to work. I want to say there's more time here for us to continue to find ways to reduce costs, which is not up there. We're creating the opportunity that allows for this additional, or for this early demolition package, which gets things out of the way and kind of clears the deck for the start of construction. The Shade Tree discussion has really reduced costs, our work with them has reduced costs to the job, and we're going to continue to work with Radnor Township to that end. So that's what we're seeing right now with the scheduling. I'm afraid I'm going to have to step out for a moment.
Okay. So the next, I guess, Steve, do you want to comment?
Sure. Yeah. So this is a view looking at the brick volume of the library with all of its natural light and glass. This is looking into one of the three courtyards that are between the classroom wings that looks back towards that main lobby that we saw a moment ago. And this is also, on the extreme left of the image, you'll see the outdoor classroom that has been designed into the project. Again, one of the things that took a little bit more time, but is going to provide great benefit educationally and experientially for the school. And so this is showing a view of the landscape looking back towards the building.
Next, I just want to walk you through the construction phasing plan. We, this is, as Damian had indicated, we had been working through different options for phasing with the current start date. This seemed like the most logical approach to the project. We have already reviewed this with the township. They're fine with it, but if you want to go to the next slide there, there we go. Okay. This may be a little difficult to see, but if you look in the top of the page, there's an orange rectangle there. That is the annex building. The plan is to demolish that over the summer and install a temporary playground area, since the new building will be going in the same location as the current playground. So we need to find a home for playground. That's the area we just chose to use. So that'll be going on in the summer, so that when the students return to class in the fall, they'll have the new playground in place. Once we start with construction in October, the intention is to enclose the entire construction area with a chain link fence. We are looking at some options to what kind of covering we want to put on that fence in the areas adjacent to the school. One option we looked at was a simple cloth filter that will filter out dust and, you know, just the visual aspects. We also were looking at options for maybe some sound deadening material there as a possibility. But in any case, we will encircle the entire construction area with the temporary chain link fence to separate construction activities from the public and students. The entrance to the building will be, they will enter through the main entrance drive to the campus, and right at the first bend, the first 90-degree bend to the right, the construction traffic will split off and go along the back of the new addition. So all construction traffic will enter through there. We'll separate them out pretty quickly. We will have a contractor parking area immediately to the right of that driveway. Up a little bit above that is the area where we'll be putting in the geothermal well field system. There's 200 wells, I believe it is, that we'll be installing there. That'll be, we'll hope to begin that in the fall. That'll take some time there to install. And then we'll build, there'll be a, as you may recall, this building, we're building into the hillside, and the lower level of the new building is basically one floor below the existing building. So in order to maintain a safe egress for students out of the existing building, while we're building the new building, we're going to put temporary shoring in there to hold back the earth and maintain the grade along the outside so we can maintain egress around the back of the building. We'll build the building that we anticipate taking until June of 2027. In June of 2027, the building will be complete. The school district will be able to start moving in furniture, moving over furniture from the existing school, getting everything ready there so that come the fall, students can start classes in the new building. Over that summer also, if you want to ship, yeah, here we go. Over that summer, excuse me, we will begin demolition of the existing elementary school. The goal is to get as much, get enough done so that we can get the new bus loop in, so that we have a way for students to get to this school, either be dropped off by buses or parents and picked up. We'll use that bus loop for both, and we believe there should be an adequate room there to stack both parent cars and buses. And then we will install a portion of the new parking lot that is not within the footprint of the existing building, so that there will be some parking available for the school. We also intend to use the tennis courts for additional temporary parking. Most likely, that'll be staff parking on the tennis courts. So when students arrive in the fall, we'll have that tennis, we'll have the bus loop ready, we'll have a portion of the parking ready, we'll have tennis courts turned into temporary parking as well. You will notice in this phase, again, we are encircling the entire area. This time, it's a blue line around the outside for temporary fence. We're always going to try to maintain, we're always going to not try, we are always going to maintain a construction fence around any construction activities to keep them, first of all, to keep safety for the public, second of all, to keep the construction debris from blowing off the site. But that'll be going during that construction. Also during that summer, we will be reconfiguring the driveway, the entrance drive into the campus. It's primarily following the same line, but a lot of it's getting rebuilt. So we'll be repaving that and having that ready to go when students arrive. Then the next slide shows when students return, the areas in tan will be under construction. We will still have a, at the bottom of this page, there is a existing stormwater, at that point, it'll be a sediment basin, basically an open basin to collect sediment off the construction activities. That needs to be maintained until we have all the parking lots stabilized. So that'll be still in effect, in place. We will have that fenced in. We will have the area of the existing school where it has already been demolished. Now we're putting the parking lots in. That'll be fenced off, and then we'll also be fencing off around the playfields up at the top and the stormwater detention basin at the top of the page there as well. That'll all be fenced in. Students will be able to, like I said, buses will come in, parents will come in, drop off on that teardrop loop. They will enter next to the gymnasium. We want to try to keep them away from the construction activities as much as we can. So we aren't going to, we're going to try to avoid bringing them into the front entrance to the building, just because we want to keep them away from construction activities to the greatest extent possible. We will, public will enter, though, through the, in the entrance next to the, what's the proposed kindergarten wing at the far end of the building. There will have to be some sort of temporary measures put in place as far as a temporary desk or something to monitor that door, but we think it's probably prudent to try to keep as much pedestrian traffic away from the construction activities as we can. Excuse me. The other thing I should point out is during these activities, we will be putting Jersey barriers between the construction activities. In addition to a fence, a six-foot chain link fence, we will also have Jersey barriers between any paths where students will be walking and the construction activities to provide an added level of security and safety for the kids. We just frankly don't trust a chain link fence enough to stop a roller or, you know, a, any large piece of construction equipment. So we felt that Jersey barriers was a prudent measure to put in place for that. This will, this phase will last until December 27, January 28, at what point we will complete the construction and be out of everyone's hair. I guess the last thing that will happen is, I mentioned that sediment basin at the bottom of the page, that will get converted to the underground stormwater detention, permanent stormwater detention basin that we've talked about. But that'll be one of the last things we do as we're heading out the site.
That and tennis courts, because those tennis courts have to be done after the parking's finished.
And restore the tennis courts. That's right. Okay.
This is a view of the cafeteria. So this is one of the large gathering spaces in the building. You'll see the glass to the corridor on the right-hand side, the serving area, which is a wide open inviting area in the center, and then more windows to the exterior with a high ceiling to allow for an open inviting field of the space. And, yes, and this is the art room. So this is on the lower level underneath the library, and this is a, one of the most exciting spaces in the building for its connection to the outdoors. The outdoor classroom is immediately adjacent to that and a view out to the courtyard as well. So an opportunity to take advantage of outdoors for art activities and should be a very memorable space for the students.
And I guess not finally, but the other, the next item is reviewing the budget, the estimated construction cost of the project with you. As you recall, we, Site Logic prepared a schematic design cost estimate in October of '23. I can't believe it's been that long already. And then in May, we came back with a design development cost estimate. We've made some suggestions on how to reduce costs, presented that in June of last year, and now we're back again with an updated cost. So if you look at that, you can see there's a column for each of those cost estimates. We are currently running a little bit over our schematic, or our design development cost estimate after cost reductions. However, on the building side, I believe we have found enough additional cost reduction measures to keep, get the building back within the estimated cost. Site development costs are up about 1.1 million. That's a little more challenging to find enough money without creating issues with our permitting. One of the things we have to keep in mind is we don't want to delay the permitting process. We have to be judicious in how we approach cost reduction measures there. But we are, and then the other things that have come up, and this is, I'll be frank, this is on me. I did not, we did not anticipate or did not include in our budget costs for playground equipment. And we did not think, and at the time, I think we were not anticipating using the tennis courts for parking, so we hadn't included any money to redo the tennis courts. There's about $2 million we're budgeting for that right now. So that's a big chunk of where we're over on our costs on the project right now. I think we can find most of the rest of the, the cost increases. We've found enough to eliminate most of the rest of that. But the playground equipment and the tennis courts probably is a little more than we're going to be able to find, we've been able to find so far anyways. We were able to reduce our soft costs. If you look, the soft costs are down about $842,000. That is primarily because we had budgeted $2 million for the financing costs, cost of issuing, bond issuance. I'm not sure if any of you recall, but during the Act 34 hearing, that cost was projected at $1 million. So we've updated our cost estimates based on that and brought our soft costs down. So we've updated our cost estimates based on that and brought our soft costs down. So overall, we're about $2.3 million over where we were at design development. There is a chart, oh, the chart's a little bit further, we'll follow, we'll follow that late, little bit.
Before you continue, I wasn't expecting Walt to say that that was his responsibility because I thought it was mine, because I've been here. The tennis courts and particularly the playground equipment. Again, not offering an excuse, but I'm going to tell you what, what happened, what happened to me as I looked at this. Early on, we had a lump sum, a kind of a lump number for our site work. Yes, thank you. Early on, we had a, a big number for site work costs, and the site wasn't developed enough for us to really ferret out any of that, which was schematic. Where my regret is, is design development. I wish I would have been able to tell you this at design development. We'd had the same problem we have right now, but we would have known it earlier. And that's really where I, I feel that we did not perform the way we should have. I wish we could have identified this at design development. Maybe we didn't have the ability to design, to identify that we didn't have the tennis courts because we hadn't planned on redoing those yet, but I don't even know that. My, my regret and my apology is related to the fact that we didn't pick that up at design development. Much like with the schedule, as we get closer and closer to our bid period and our drawings and draw, are much more refined and much more detailed, and we have a full scope of work for, for site work, which we didn't heretofore, the clarity that's available to us is much different. So, and we're comparing this project to other projects that have bid to see where are we? Does it make sense? And we're using all the metrics that we can to say, one, have we seen everything that there is to see with regard to what's in the scope and having a number? And two, do these numbers make sense when compared to other projects and things that are going on in the industry in our area? So I wanted to, I wanted to put that in. I was not expecting Walt to say that it was on him, because I've been here and you've seen me more than anybody else. I think that's on me, and that's what happened.
So the next slide is a rather difficult slide to present in a PowerPoint. However, what that, what this slide tries to do is dem, relay where the cost increases and cost, costs went up, where costs went down, and how it all stacked, adds up. So we had our design development cost estimate, and then our construction, after cost reductions, then our construction document cost estimate and that variance. And then if we take all the alternate bids out of the site work, which was $461,000, a relatively smaller amount, but, and then how that compares. Quickly, you know, we, we moved some money from our, of general conditions from the building to the site work, probably just a, an accounting thing. Demolition's pretty much the same. The well field is increased in cost, and that's primarily because we've moved the well field further away from the building because of the, some issues with stormwater management, trying to work, coordinate stormwater management with the.
Do you mean the geothermal?
Excuse me, the geothermal well, yes. So that, that increased that cost a couple hundred thousand dollars because there's, we moved it away five or 600 feet, and there's numerous lines that had to be run between them. Earthwork and grading is up mainly because we didn't, at design development, we didn't yet have a grading plan put together. So we were kind of taking a, a best guess at what we thought, how much earth we thought we were going, going to have to move. Paving's up primarily because of some additional work at the entrance drive, but also I think we're just, with the price of oil, asphalt prices are up. We hadn't fully anticipated that when we put the last estimate together. Concrete, site concrete is up mainly because there's more retaining walls than we, site retaining walls than we had anticipated, concrete retaining walls. And landscaping is up because we had not fully, I, I had not fully appreciated the, the extent of the, the trees that we were going to be required to have by the tree commission.
Even though they were reduced from what they could have been.
Yes, and it's a good point, yeah. We'd have probably reduced several hundred thousand dollars' worth of landscaping. We did pick up some money. We, we saved some, several hundred thousand, $270,000 on stormwater management systems. Was a little less extensive than we had anticipated. If you recall, we were kind of shooting from the hip a little bit whenever we were discussing which stormwater detention structures to put underground, which put above ground. So there was a little bit of guesswork in there, but that, that worked out in our favor. We took a harder look at the contractor overhead profit on the site work and decided that we were a little fat on that before, pared that back. And since the design is pretty nearly complete, we felt like we no longer needed to carry a significant contingency in our estimates. We could pretty well dial in what was in the projects. We were able to eliminate our estimating and design contingency at this point. So all in all, you know, we're, we're up about, after cost reduction measures, about $700,000 on the site work. Similarly, we have a comparison for the building costs. Again, you know, I talked about we moved some general conditions costs from this building to the site, so that's, general conditions costs are down. Footers are a little, little more cubic yardage of footers than we had anticipated at design development. Design wasn't fully complete at that time, so concrete's up. Steel is down significantly, and that's primarily because as we started doing more research into the market conditions for the cost of steel, structural steel, the costs were actually down. We're hoping that holds. We're not sure.
There's no way that's going to hold. No, and I'm not laughing.
Yeah, we are, frankly, we are concerned about that, and that, we'll talk about that in a little bit. The, there was a little bit more wood block, or quite a bit more wood blocking than we Glass and glazing is up. We had not anticipated the amount of laminated glass that we're installing in the building. Basically, anything within about eight feet of the ground around this building is laminated glass. We had not anticipated that in our estimate. That may be partly because I'm just not familiar with, you know, my first rodeo with, with Radnor Township.
I think that came about during.
That was a decision.
It was a decision during construction documents, safety and security.
Flooring is, let me sm, make sure I'm getting the right lines here. Yeah, flooring's down quite a bit, and that's just a refinement of our costs. Excuse me?
No, that's going to be one of those things.
Terrazzo's still in there. Yeah.
As an alternate.
As an alternate.
So it'll go up to get.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, yeah, the 1.1 million, because actually, we're, we're pretty close on, before that.
Yeah, no, there's, there's a lot to dig into, that's why I'm happy you're here.
Yes, yes, you're, you're right, though. The, the 1.1 million was pri, is primarily the alternates to eliminate the terrazzo and that some of the, and reduce some of the other flooring. A few more marker boards than we anticipated, a little bit more casework than we had estimated. And HVAC, if you recall, at design development, we were, we're still trying to decide which type of HVAC system we wanted to use when we were estimating at that time. So the drawings were very schematic in nature mechanically. Major pieces of equipment were picked, but we then rearranged everything because we decided to get rid of the sawtooth roof and go to the flat roof and put the equipment on, so everything got redesigned, and it just ended up costing more than we anticipated. Electrical's up a little bit, primarily switch boards and panels, and, but we, again, pared back our overhead and profit from the general, from the contractors and, excuse me, eliminated the, the estimating design contingency for 1.6 million.
One of the things that I think is important to remember, and I've said this before, what's, what is here in design maintains the program that was desired. It maintains some things that have been very important over the course of time to the district, whether it's a geothermal well field and, and using, you know, that sustainability piece, or whether it's how we're dealing with our underground versus surface stormwater detention. There are things here that, that we have kept true, including and importantly, the program. The challenge that we have is that when we decide we're going to set to a number and we want to buy as much as we can for up to that number, or we want to make it as low of a cost as we can and have options up to a certain budget amount. That gets, that can get pretty difficult to do, and this is an iterative process. Now, coming in here and saying we're within $2 million on $77 million is not a lot of money when it comes to estimating and what we expect estimates to do. We don't expect estimates to be perfect. We know that they're going to have 3% deviation. We try and estimate on the high side. We have the project that we just reviewed today that was awarded in the fall, and it looks like it's showing that we're estimating a little bit on the high side, and it makes a lot of sense, and it's one of those metrics that I noted. But I think as we look at, is terrazzo going to be an alternate and all these other decisions that we're going to be making, and the things that you'll get to decide when the numbers come in and we know what the market's going to tell us things cost, please don't lose sight of the fact that we have not only an amazing program that fits within the Radnor Township School District way of teaching children, but we have an amazing building. We're just kind of picking and choosing levels of finishing, other things like that, that we want in this so that we can target our best and, and most appropriate cost of the building and expenditure decision. So it's very challenging. And as I said before, I think with full drawings that we now have, we are, we are seeing the things that we need to see, but don't lose sight of the fact that we have not changed this building in any major way, away from program and away from these things that, that the district has hold near and dear.
The next graphic, this is actually a pretty good graphic. This is, kind of tells the story of how virtually every project that we, that I've handled through pre-construction has gone. You, you set a budget upfront, schematic design, maybe the costs eke up a little bit for your design development estimate, you do some cost reduction measures, you bring it down. You can see, you know, it went from 72 million up to 83 million, and we took, we cost, reduced the cost by about $6 million with various cost reduction options. Costs eke back up again, a couple million dollars at construction document estimate, and now we're bringing it back down to the 77.4 million, brought it back down to, to that $77 million range. So it's that give and take that typically happens. It's, you know, we just, like any project, you know, you look at all the stuff you want, and then you look at the price and you say, well, maybe we won't do that. Maybe we'll take this, but we won't do that. And that's sort of, sort of that give and take, you always, and you always want to have some of that. It's actually a healthy process. Sometimes it feels a little frustrating, but it's a good process because it helps you make sure you're making the right decisions.
Walt, I think, does that, does the total cost after DD, after cost reductions, I think that number was closer to 74.
Actually, I think it was, yeah.
Between 74 and 75 million. And I think what you're showing there is before some of those costs.
Bit alternates, before the bit alternates.
Before the bit alternates.
Yes, yeah.
So I don't, I don't know if some of you were noticing that, but I was looking at that, I was looking for that 74-point-something number, and that's where that should be.
Yeah.
And we'll, we will re, we will relabel this and resubmit it to the district.
Yeah, I was having trouble following the numbers because our schematic that we were talking about back in May was 69. Then we went to 74 with the total design development.
Ultimately, at DD, we did go to 74, that's correct, at design development.
Yeah.
Which is what got us to the 75 number that we've been talking about.
I think the.
Yeah, there's a bar or two missing, because we, the first time we saw numbers, it was not 72 million.
That may have been before Site Logic got involved, is my guess. There were, were numbers, I think, before that.
No, I mean, I actually reviewed all the meetings today, so it was, I mean, in, in May, we were looking at 69 as the schematic, that we, I mean, but we were also talking about 74.
Okay, okay.
So, I think that's why I'm just, I think in terms of, I'm not sure where these numbers are.
Yeah. I think, I think, I know what happened with the design development estimate. That was before the bit alternates.
And, and maybe that, you know, to keep this moving forward, clean this up to go using slide 19 and slide 22, so go back and if you could put, if these dates could match with slide 2019, and then also add, if there are additional ones that we should have had, that would be, make it a little clearer. Thank you.
And then the next couple of slides are various bit alternates that we anticipate, including in the documents. The purpose of the bit alternate is giving that flexibility so you can maximize the value you get for, and stay within budget. So there's a number of alternates. The yellow ones are new ones that we've suggested since design development. The white ones were all, were reviewed at, at design development with you. These are still in works. This is not a hard and fast list. We will continue to refine this list and, and work through it with leadership and try to come up with a comprehensive list, but this gives you an idea of what kind of things we can, we have on the table.
I, I, I don't know what the rest of the plan of the meeting is, but there's a lot of changes here. I, I, I'm going to want to see what a picture of acoustic tile looks like, because the, the slide tonight is still showing the wood.
No, I think technically, it's, I, I've been marking each page trying to figure out which thing from the alternates list has been changed in the pictures.
Yeah.
It, it's just flat. I think it used.
No, it looks like wood on.
It's got a little bit of a grain, but I think it's supposed to be switching to acoustic tile. Yeah, I, I agree. I think we need to see pictures of what these changes would be, because I think this budget doesn't reflect what the board expected.
The, the intention would be that when we come back to you in May, probably, go, go through the alternates in more detail. Would that be appropriate time, probably?
We're going to have to talk about that, because I don't think I'm going to approve any other steps on this. I'm not the only person, but I don't think I'm going to vote to approve moving forward any further unless I understand what this is all going to involve.
If that's a different conversation.
Yeah, okay. But we, we, we definitely want to give you as much information as you, we can upfront.
It's a March conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just going to say, there's a March, early demolition project of, of vote. So I don't know how we're going to get to that.
Okay. But you need to feel comfortable with the decisions you're going to need to make, so whatever information we need to provide you, certainly want to do that.
So rather than go through all the alternates, because I think we're going to end up going through those line by line as a group, can we, can you explain to us the, I guess, the Act, the last couple of slides so we can move, I, I know people are going to get antsy about questions on some of this.
So as you recall, at the Act 34 hearing, we set a maximum building, construction cost for the project. There were two, a couple of numbers that we set. The one that's, that is the most important is what's called the total estimated aggregate building expenditure, which is the cost of the building construction, not including any site development costs. And that would, the site development costs would not only include, you know, the paving and dirt, curbs and sidewalks and earthwork and storm soars, also the geothermal well field and the electrical incoming service and the electrical, and site lighting. But it would, all that would not be excluded from the construction cost. So it's the building construction cost, the architect's fee for the designing of the building, not including site development, and then furnishings, fixtures and equipment. So that's for the, the, at the Act 34 hearing, we set the 49, 8, 19, the 3,000,071, 765 for design costs, and the 1.2 million, or the 54,090,000 as the total estimated building expenditure. At that. At that time, the aggregate building expenditure sta, limit as set by the Department of Education was calculated to be 55 million, 707,288. So we were about 1.6 million dollars under the, that limit. We've just recently learned, actually just last week, we learned the Department of Education is going to be increasing that limit by 2.66% as of June?
Now.
Oh, is it a me, retro, immediate?
Immediate.
Oh, immediate, okay. So that increases your limit to 57 million, 191,000. We are currently, like, is it estimating it at? Uh, yeah, okay, yeah, 54 million, 090. So that will put us about $3 million under the, that Act 34 limit. Then in addition to that, you have all your other, your cost, soft costs, your site development costs, your additional soft costs, and additional construction cost brings us to the total of 77.4 million dollars for the project. But we've got, one of the good things about the delay is we have been able to take advantage of that increase in expenditure limit. So it gives us, gives you a little bit of flexibility if you decide you want to spend more money, you don't have the Department of Education breathing down your neck saying, "No, you can't." Not saying you have to.
It even gives you flexibility.
Just our neighbors.
For the alternates. It does give you flexibility within the 75 million dollars that we set with alternates that you're, you can spend on the building as opposed to not being able to do that because you, you need to have a cushion for some potential change orders to the building itself. Not a big cushion, but, but some cushion.
That's important to note because the, the aggregate building expenditure, that Act 34 limit does not end at award of bids. It carries through construction, so any change orders that you may have during construction that affect the building cost have to also fit within that limit. So you want to leave yourself some room for those so you aren't getting yourself into trouble when you get into construction. And I think the...
Do you want to explain the early demolition?
Yes. So...
And just so I can, just for people who, this is a new kind of broken out phase that wasn't originally part of what was proposed.
Right.
This is part of the proposal to actually keep this moving even though we're so far behind.
Yes, exactly. This is...
It, I'm sorry, it wasn't included cost-wise or it wasn't included?
It wasn't broken out.
We haven't talked about it previously.
It wasn't a separate bid, but the costs were in there, yes.
That's the answer to my question.
Yes, yeah, the costs were in there, but just, we hadn't planned on doing it quite like this. And the reason that, that we're proposing this is now if we're not starting construction until October, we need to have this playground in place whenever students arrive. We don't want to be holding up construction in October trying to get a playground in place. We want to get going with construction right away. So the intention is to release an early bid package to demolish the two existing houses and backfill those foundations, demolish the annex building and prepare that pad for a temporary playground, and then install the temporary playground. And then there's a few trees right around the vicinity of the existing school that we want, that are going to need to be removed in order to build the new building. We want to do that while students are not in the school. Those, those are large trees. We do not want to be cutting those down while kids are in the school. So we want to take those out also over the summer. So the plan with that is that this district would, has authorized Site Logic and ELA to go ahead with start, getting started, this administration has. We're, we're working on the design. Frankly, we're going to be designing it anyways. We need, want to submit to the township for permits in March. We have been assured by the township that this should be a fairly simple permitting process, should not be held up by any of the other, our other permits. Intention would be for in March for the board to approve, authorize us to solicit proposals for this work. We would release that for bid on, in late March, receive bids in mid-April, come back to the board in April with the bids, and then in May, the board would author, would approve the award of that, that bid. It would just be one contract. And then in June, we would issue the notice to proceed, and then as soon as school lets out, we would start construction and complete that over the summer. Those dates make sense, provided we answer your...
I think there's going to be a lot of conversation about what dates make sense. So can I, just clarifying on the, the temporary playground that you, that the, is proposed to be put in during that demolition time, that's something we need anyway for the project. It's just that you're putting, moving that up to make sure it's in place before the school year starts. And to clarify Mrs. Stern's question, all the costs of this demolition were built into the original proposal. There's not an additional cost for breaking this out and doing it separately?
No, that was always sort of the budget for the project, so, yeah.
Okay. Who wants to start? I'm going to go last because I have a page full of questions I'm hoping some of you will ask.
I just wanted to clarify one thing with the, with the early demolition. You mentioned some tree work that you weren't expecting. Was that cost originally cre, included, or is that an additional cost?
The, the, I think what you're referring to, I had not fully appreciated the amount of new trees that we would have to plant. These are existing trees that have to be removed. And if you're familiar with that campus, there's some large trees there that we'd rather take out without anyone in the building.
So we had always planned on taking the trees down, it's just about when we do it.
Okay.
And we, and we had always planned and estimated to take those down, correct? We'd be careful how we explain this.
So just back to the trees. Do we have to take out these large trees?
Unfortunately, we do. They, the primary ones are basically behind the existing elementary school and are right basically in the area of the main entrance to the new school.
So?
And...
Wouldn't it be lovely to have heritage trees at the...
There's been the footprint of the exist, of the building.
Oh, well, that's different. It would just be my request, it's always my request, to try to...
We have, there are...
Save as many trees as you possibly can.
There are...
You can plant all baby trees.
Yeah.
We've seen this before, 25% of them die, and it doesn't look the same as a Radnor campus.
From, from the very beginning, with respect to the parking lot layout, we have, if, if you think of the large oak trees that are near the existing bus drop-off, where there are healthy, large heritage trees, we, we've attempted to preserve those, and there are several examples of locations where we were able to adjust the grading such that those existing trees could remain. They'll be protected during construction. As you know, that can be a challenge, but it, it's incumbent on us to, to document that properly so that we can preserve those. So the, the, the trees that Walt's referring to in this part of the conversation are those that are literally within the footprint or within the excavation area of the new building, and they just simply can't be preserved.
With regard to the playground equipment, is there playground equipment that's there now that you can salvage, that we don't have to spend a hundred...
We looked into that.
Oh, 1.5 million on new playground equipment?
We looked into trying to salvage some of that playground equipment, and what we're being told in, I've heard this numerous times before, and having worked a little bit with putting these systems together, it doesn't surprise me that it was going to cost as much to try to salvage them as it would be to buy new. If you've ever watched one of these things go together, they are an absolute erector set, and there's, you know, it takes IKEA to a whole new level as far as, you know, all the different parts and pieces that go together. And if you start pulling them out, you know, you end up buying new hardware because the hardware's not in great shape or you damage it, and by the time you end up with it, you might as well have bought new, unfortunately.
So what I'm going to say is, I think about this really differently, I think. I'm, I'm not so hung up on all these little changes. I have a hard time following all of that, what, you know, what we decided before. I'm, I'm looking at this thing globally, and you know what I said from the beginning. This, we were discussing a $50 million elementary school. I'm still stuck on that. And then it was like, oh, these things changed, these things changed, now it's up to 70 or 75 million. And all along, I kept thinking, well, surely there's a way. And Ms. Duffy asked this at the very beginning. She said, "Isn't there a way to get back down to 45 million?" And we never, I felt like got satisfactory answers to that. And now we're talking, oh, there's another 2 million shoved in there, we're up at 77 million. I think that that's an exorbitant amount for an elementary school. And so I'm not hung up on, oh, you know, this went up 100,000 and... For me, it's a fundamental question of, we, we asked for that in the beginning. I didn't want this to be much more than a $50 million elementary school. And all of a sudden, it's now 77 million and, and growing because we're still, you know, things are falling behind, prices are going to go up, there's going to be all these change orders. So I'm uncomfortable with, like, why isn't there a way to get this back down to a reasonable cost for an elementary school? Why, why, why do we keep talking about what this, you know, this ratio is from the state? I actually don't care what their ratio is if they say we can fit, spend 57 million. That doesn't mean that we should. So the process frustrates me because we asked a long time ago for, how can we get this back down? And, and we were told these ratios that you can spend, you can spend up to this limit, we're fine because we're only a million below this limit. That's meaningless to me. To me, it's 50 million dollars is a lot for an elementary school. 77 million, I think, is exorbitant. And so I'm looking at this globally. That's, and that's, so that's where I'm just stuck. And so, you know, I understand you're going to have to go through, and you have a hard job because you're going to have to answer everybody on all these yellow changes, you know? But to me, that just reinforces that there's savings in here. So why can't this be back where it was when we started? That's where I'm stuck.
Susan? Sorry, Ms. Stern?
It's okay. Thank you for bringing the information. I, I will say, I, I echo a portion of what Ms. Solomon is saying, only in this regard. As one of the few votes against this particular version of the plan, I expressed concern at the time that the site costs were a lot, and they've grown exorbitantly. It's, and you don't, you don't know this, I can't remember, Walt, but I actually voted against this particular school. Now, I respect the, the vote of the board, but it's, it's hard and increasingly difficult for me to swallow the site cost plans, the site costs. I'll leave it at that. It's increasingly difficult for me to swallow the site costs and to see 2 million here and 2 million there, and to be told that that was basically what it would cost for us to move children off campus and build the school in the location that it currently sits, and yet we're just going to all of a sudden be up a few million dollars. It's, I, I echo Lydia, it's hard, and I don't ascribe to the notion that just because we can spend 57 million, we should spend 57 million. And, and the final thing I'll say about the numbers, and goodness knows I love to talk about numbers, is I think we are all kind of fooling ourselves that these are the numbers because until we get back the bids, these are not the numbers. These are the estimates of the numbers, and I remain concerned as we're kind of betting against ourselves right now. We keep jacking up the price, and I'm more anxious to get the cost out there and let the market tell us what the cost is and start there. So that's what I'm going to say about the cost. Sewer planning module.
Yes.
I understand about the influent, infiltration. I'm a little surprised, that part of town, you're coming into that problem only because the houses are not nearly as old as downtown Wayne. So I'm a little surprised about that. And normally, you get your sewer planning module done in final phase, final approval of planning commission. So I guess the good news is that you found out that there was going to need to be extra work on the inflow and outflow early in the process. Our H M has held up sewer planning modules for a long time. That's the Radnor Marple Have Afford Sewer Planning Module Commission. There's an actual commission that looks at our sewer flow. We didn't get hung up at the high school, I believe, because we could state honestly, although we were adding more bathrooms, we were not planning to increase the size of the school with the number of students. So we could make a reasonable argument that we were not increasing the outflow. Interestingly, you know, of course, we are proposing, as we do, a rebalancing of elementary schools here in Radnor, that the, the outflow, there would be more students at this building. But I have a, an interesting thought occurred to me, listening to you today. You might be able to pitch that the overall outflow from our three elementary schools would not be increasing because we're just talking about a rebalancing. So if we start to get hung up at R H M with outflow, maybe they would be willing to look at our elementary schools in total. Just a thought. Because they could hold up the planning module even after this stage of it. You guys know that, I know that. The other question I had is, hold on a second, how did the planning commission meeting go? I didn't, I didn't attend. Did you get preliminary plan approval a couple of weeks ago?
Unfortunately, we did not.
Okay, so...
On the agenda for March.
Okay, so Damian's smile was, well, he noticed my, my grin, that's true. When you said a long time ago that the, you thought there was a lot of time built in, I think I distinctly remember saying I thought that the planning process could take like...
Sure did.
A year. I hope...
A year would have been okay.
I, so I hope you're able to continue to move forward with the planning process. I'm sorry, the, the presentation has gone off my screen. I wish, I had some, and I'm trying to get it back up. Yeah, let me just look at yours if I could look at it, thank you. So, planning module. I was curious about the, and I don't think I ever noticed the proposed wood, light wood ceiling in the lobby, so I was curious about that tonight. I just didn't remember seeing that in a picture.
Can you show me the...
But it now talk, we're now talking about doing an out alternate of acoustic tile instead. It looks like it'd be on page five. I just never noticed it to be that wood grain before. Shade tree didn't surprise me. The MPDES, is that because of the water, I mean, the watershed down the bottom of the hill or the, the wetlands?
Anytime in Penn, you disturb more than one acre of land, you have to go for an NPDES permit through the Conservation District, which is an arm of the Department of Environmental Protection.
Great.
But, yeah, that's basically any project that gets over an acre of disturbance, we need to get one.
Right, so...
There's nothing special.
So why did you not, you, you put it on the reason of why there's been impacts. Why is NPDES delaying you? You knew you had to do it.
Actually, NPDES is not the schedule driver here.
Okay.
But there was, there was a change. We had originally led to believe we would need, that a general permit would be fine, and then we were informed that we need to do an individual permit, so that was changed.
An individual permit? I don't, what does that mean?
That means, yeah, it, it, it's a similar review, but it's viewed, a general permit is an easier process with less paperwork. An individual permit is just looked at with more scrutiny, and it has to do with the waterways that are involved. That, that came as a suppo- That, that came as a surprise and that was a, was a recent revelation for us.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that.
The sewage planning module is really driving the schedule right now. And you can't get your NPDES permit until you get your sewage planning module.
Okay, well, I'm glad I offered a suggestion there. You may have mentioned that our concrete cost has gone up because there's more retaining walls. Well, that was just something you said.
Yes, yes, yes.
I, I'm not seeing a change to the plan that there's more retaining walls. In fact, I'm seeing an, an add alternate where we're going to take some concrete retaining walls and switch out block.
The walls basically got...
I don't understand that.
It was just early estimates of what we thought we were going to need as far as height. They, they ended up higher than we anticipate, taller than we anticipated.
Okay, another site challenge.
It's not more in lineal foot, it's more in height and area.
Got it, okay. I don't know why this question never occurred to me before and maybe I'm thinking about the bleachers at the high school. I would not like to hear in a few months, let me say this again. I would not like to hear in a few months that we were surprised and that there's some issues with the structural integrity of the existing building that we've uncovered when we went to start disturbing the, the, the ground, the grading, so close to the existing building. Which was a surprise we encountered at the high school when we took out the bleachers and the structural integrity of the pool wall, we found out that there was a problem. Now, it's, I'm not opposed to finding out a problem. I would not like to be surprised by an additional cost. So I hope everybody has looked at, I think there's some amount of ground that's, I mean, some amount of footing that is underneath the back part of the existing building. And we're going to be going up very close to it, so...
Yeah, the new building is about 30 feet from the existing building.
I know that, yeah.
And yeah, there's, I think the, the footing for the new building goes about eight feet beyond the footprint. So it's within 22 feet.
There'll be a lot of equipment.
But we'll, but we'll be, yeah, we'll have to put, it'll probably either be, we'll make it the contractor's responsibility to, to pick the system, but we'll give them design parameters of what it has to do. But probably either be a H-pound lagging where they drive steel beams.
I don't want to be surprised with an additional cost that there's a problem by going so close to the existing building.
I think that the answer to that is, I want to do a little bit more research about what is there just to make sure that there isn't something that we don't know. Sorry, I want to make sure that we don't, so...
I think you heard my, I think you heard my comment. I appreciate it, Damian. Great.
And I'm gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna see some action on that.
I appreciate that. I did notice you moved the geothermal well further away. I did notice that this is the first time we're seeing using the tennis courts for, you know, construction for sighting. I, I get that. Is there concern with a loss of efficiency having the well, the geothermal wells that much farther away from the building? Will we have to size it bigger to go a further distance and not lose efficiency? Is that going to cost us extra money?
No, if anything, it probably should actually, if anything, it might reduce the, the amount of wells. Because you think about it, while it's running underground, it's doing the same thing as it would, the water's doing the same thing as it would be when it's going down in the well. In the wintertime, it's gathering heat out of the ground. In the summertime, it's expelling heat in the ground, whether it's running horizontally or vertically. Matter of fact, if you look, if you know anybody that's got a residential geothermal heating system, a lot of times, they don't drill wells. A lot of times with the residential, they'll just run a loop of pipe underneath the ground horizontally.
Got it, so the difference in grade, because I know that where the new proposed wells are, you're going to have to go uphill, you're going to lose some, some grading of, are we going to have to now bury those deeper? I mean...
Right, well, can I answer some of those questions? Just to put a little light on, to answer your question, that's a great question. So yes, if you move the geothermal well field theoretically, you would need more, you would need more horsepower, more energy or pumping power to move the water a further distance, right? Now, what we have explored is because, you know, water has a density of one, most of your geothermal well fields are filled with a glycol or antifreeze solution, which is environmentally friendly. It's alcohol-based. What we're exploring for this project is a specific, special thermal transfer fluid. It's, it's new to the market. It's, it's, well, I shouldn't say new. It's been out for about 10 years. And what it does is it actually reduces the, the density or specific gravity of the fluid. So antifreeze has a much higher specific gravity than what water is in density. So what it does is it actually reduces it down to the same as water. So while theoretically, you would need more pumping power using this transfer fluid, we'll be able to afford not increasing the horsepower of our, our pumps to get it out there. Plus, we'll gain the benefit of the thermal conductivity to which it offers, so...
Okay, hopefully, and hopefully the fluid is also environmentally friendly and...
Yes.
Not horribly more expensive.
No, it is, it is made for that. It was actually saving money because of the thermal conductivity over its life cycle.
I don't know how anybody missed the playgrounds. This is an elementary school. I'm sorry, that's frustrating. And I know I mentioned the playgrounds because I asked about sunshades.
We asked about playgrounds, yes.
Thank you, we asked about playgrounds. I think probably the last big thing that I'm a little surprised about, I mean, I'm glad to see it. Don't, oh, no, there's two things, but they're page back to back. The staging of the Phase Three, it's on page 15. It seems that although there are delays in the bidding process and all of that and kind of getting the ground running, to your point, Damian, you know, we may have sucked up the extra time that you thought, you know, that you thought was there, which is, you know, look, that happens. It happens. But you're still talking about completing the building at the end of June of '27. So this is the first time that I recall seeing that the demolition of the school and the parking lot wasn't going to be done by September.
That's correct.
Not only not done by September, but all the way to January. So that is unhappy news to me. I don't know why we would be hearing about that so late. And there's nothing about the, the delays that are, the delays we're experiencing in getting, in getting the shovel in the ground. Let me, let me put it that way. It's the shovel in the ground is where we're delayed right now. But you guys are still anticipating a, a completion date of June of '27. So why are we only now hearing about how long the building might take to take down? And I just want to ask a second question. I actually posed this to Ken a week, a week or two ago. We were chit-chatting. In our original plan, we were waiting for the children to leave in June to start taking down the building. Obviously, we would finish the building in June and take down the, the new building and get it all going. If we experience construction delays and they are still building or finishing or whatever in the summer of '27, I would like to be clear that my preference would be, we still need to start deconstruction. It, it's always been posed as, well, we're going to finish the building and then we're going to take down the old building. Well, if we're not finished with the building, still need to be taking down the old building over that summer. Obviously, making sure that we're going to be able to open the new building, don't get me wrong. But I, I am surprised to see that you're all of a sudden anticipating such a long timeframe for the, for that Phase Three.
During design development, one of the things that we were looking at was, one of the options that we had, that we looked at was moving in earlier when the schedule was finishing earlier. That allowed an amount of time for us to do all that and still have a little bit of work that trickled out into fall, but not to the extent that you see. In getting all the final plans together and understanding now that we're going to use tennis courts for parking, which can't, those, those have to be done after the park. So as all that became clear, again, this is a part of the clarity of the whole process. As all that became clear, we said, okay, this happens, then this happens, then this happens. And instead of trying to compress it, which we could, I actually look at that schedule. But I'm the guy that sat here and said, why, why do we have this much time in design and permitting? And I'm looking at that schedule going, I want to see that finished in November. And I'm not finished trying to do that, but I had the same reaction that you did. And it wasn't so much, how did it move? Because I know that in design development, we kind of slid it up into time and now we're sliding it back out to the June through some other date. I still want to get that finished as early as we can. If we started in April, then we were finishing in August and, and that's kind of moved. And unfor- unfortunately, that's part of the problem that we had when we were looking at it. Even though we had, even though we had looked real hard at trying to squeeze it into three months.
I'm fairly certain that the move in earlier in '27, like maybe over spring break or whatever that original thought was, that, that I'm not accounting for that when I say we were planning on starting to taking down the building in June, the day after the kids get out. And it's going to be tight to get it all done by September, but we, you know, but, but we think we can if the weather cooperates and blah, blah, blah. And now all of a sudden, it's an extra three and a half months because you're talking January.
Yeah.
And get a wet, bad fall and we're going to be beyond that.
I, I don't have it in front of me. But the, the building demolition was always planned to, the existing building was planned to be doing, done over the summer.
Right.
We always anticipated that the site work to construct the new parking lot in, and that site work in the place of the existing building was, was always leaking into the fall. I think it was November.
Okay.
Now, what we're saying is we're pushing that out a little bit further because there's additional work that's being anticipated for the entry drive and, and some other things. So it, we were always, my recollection is November and now we're into December, January.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm seeing January, so that's, I stand corrected. The last comment I don't think I've seen, but I, I may have missed it. A picture of the cafeteria before, and without knowing how attached you are to this particular scheme, I would just say they look to be round tables with a lot of stools that I raised some children who would have tipped around in those like you can't even imagine. And they could get hurled. Lunchtime is a time that tends to be one of those less structured times. I don't, I'm not as concerned about them in the library. I'm more concerned seeing them in the cafeteria. I don't know if this is just like a vision, but we're really actually going to do tables with the benches where they fold up quickly because I think we're planning on using this as some flexible space, so it will get used a little bit differently than, say, the library.
It is, as you suspect, a hypothetical vision of furniture that has not been designed or selected.
Not hypothetically, I don't think that chairs that can be tipped in the cafeteria is a good idea, but...
Yeah, they, they, under no circumstances would they be freestanding stools. I think the idea there is to simulate a round table with attached stools, right? Which is typical. And the other thing is, again, the round versus rectangular conversation has to do with capacity. The, this is done through our, through our calculations, through the design development phase, is the, the, the room is sized such that you have the flexibility, should you choose to, of using the round tables, which offer less density of seating, the room is sized such that you can have less dense, more comfortable seating in there. That, that particular, and, and I see what you're saying now, it looks as if those are freestanding stools. That's, that's probably the limitations of the furniture that's in the rendering software. It's meant to simulate round tables with attached stools.
Okay, great. My last thing is...
Can I just, while you're on that topic?
Sure.
I hate the round tables with the attached stools because they do not account for friend groups that have a different number of students than the table. And they create huge social issues at the middle school, huge. It's a bad idea.
I wouldn't disagree with that, but anyway. My last thing is, could we perhaps save money by utilizing the, the property off of Roberts Road once we take down the houses as our, one of the construction sighting, staging areas rather than the tennis courts? Just a thought.
We, we discussed that possibility. The elevation change is a bit challenging to get up to the school. We're also a little concerned about entering and exit off of Sprawl Road with that being a PennDOT road. But yeah, we did look at that and we, the biggest, yeah, the biggest issue was the change in elevation.
All right, I, I, that's all I, I had. I'm sorry, I did, I don't serve on facilities anymore. I don't get to ask these questions, so thank you.
I don't serve on facilities anymore either. That's probably my problem. Who else has questions? Ms. Lau?
Thank you. So I think multiple people have brought this up already, but the sewage permitting issue did also stand out to me as a potential bottleneck for this entire project. And I unfortunately know way too much about sewage permitting in southeastern Pennsylvania by virtue of my stint as the former president of my homeowners association. So much so that the term sewage apocalypse actually entered the vocabulary of my nightmares. But what I learned from that experience, and not to alarm anyone, but the situation was so bad that the original builder abandoned the project after waiting for three years to no avail. Not getting the required permits. And what I discovered is that, as Ms. Stern pointed out, sometimes the facts are not as important as the characterization and relationships. So because, I mean, the situation is like our current sewage system is already like way overburdened. It's just, you know, it's part and parcel with the aging infrastructure across our entire country. There's nothing that we can do about it. It's really just who gets the exceptions, who, you know, it, it's, it's almost purely discretionary because our project, our facts actually got worse. But then the new builder got the permits right away because of their relationships, it seemed like. And it was all in, you know, how you characterized it as new build or existing or, you know, total...
Clint's elementary school numbers, that's...
Exactly. So I guess I would encourage, you know, us to really focus on this because it does have the potential of holding up the entire project and doing what we can, you know, to, to help ease this along. But, you know, it is, it just has the potential to really stop everything else in its tracks. And, and kind of everyone to be prepared for that possibility. And then, you know, I just wanted to kind of amplify Ms. Solomon's concerns. And I, and I, you know, I've heard her made this, make this point multiple times now in multiple meetings. And yet, each time, we just kind of keep moving along. So I, I guess I would like to ask, like, what are our options? You know, if we are to lend credence to her concerns. You know, are we past the point of no return? Is it an all or nothing kind of decision? Or is it possible to get it back to the $50 million range? You know, it just seems like, you know, Ms. Solomon makes her points every time and we kind of just move on. So I, I just would like to know what are the options before the board in that regard, big picture?
So this, I, to be fair, I don't think it was ever 50 million all in. I think it was, there were, there was, it was more than 50, but the point is well taken. There was a 50 and a 45 conversation.
There was a 45 all in at one point.
It, I don't think it was all in. I don't think it was soft costs and costs for the architect. It didn't, it wasn't, it was the building. It wasn't necessarily everything. But your point is very well taken, as is Ms. Lau's, and it was one of mine. And those of you who've been on the board from back when we first did the high school project will remember the term off-ramps. And I think it, and I think Mr. Behrens is well aware of this term as well. I think we need, the board would like to understand, and Mr. Morris, Dr. Bachelor can educate you on this, but I think we do need to understand, look, we, we have sunk costs. We, if we decided today we were going to walk away from the project entirely, we would still owe money to the people who, who have done work on this. I don't think it's information everybody has at their fingertips tonight, so I don't. And I think it, you know, the conversation about off-ramps goes along with a conversation about, the whole purpose of this project is we need a new, we need a solution at Ithen. And I think the solution that the board ultimately came to was, we need a new building. Is the question, we don't need that new building, you know, is, is the answer, well, we don't need it right now. Actually, renovations would get us there. I think there were a lot of questions that came up before and we did the due diligence and we all got to this point of, no, we need a new... we did the the due diligence and we all got to this point of, no, we need a new building. So now is it something else related to that? And I think the administration could, is that a task you could take or is that, is that something that goes to site logic in terms of what our off ramps are?
Yeah, so the, the, as Damian explained a little bit ago, the off ramps are the decision points, right? The decision points to related to board action to move forward or not. And that's, that's what's identified on on this slide. So and and in terms of milestones, right?
The pieces, the the cost associated with each off ramp. Like each of these is a chance to say, no, you know what, we're not going to move forward, but there are costs associated.
Oh, I see what you mean. So, yes, so the, right, so the, the, the August, so once bids are received, right? You haven't spent the construction cost to get the bids, right? So so August, uh, per this schedule, August is when the board would authorize the award of contracts. So you accept the bids and vote essentially to move forward with signing those contracts. So that's when the bulk of the pro- of the money is spent. Between now and then, yes, it's sunk costs for fees and that sort of thing. But as as somebody eloquently mentioned yesterday, recently here in this conversation is we don't know what the costs are truly, or what the market says this project costs from a construction standpoint, until we receive those bids. So, um, at this point, I think I'd have a hard time recommending that you don't see it through to get the bids, to to have done this sunk cost, to have done all this effort and then not know what the actual market value is of this project, I think would, I'd have a hard time recommending that as your professional, so.
I I think the piece that threw me off, because I, in my head from prior projects, have had it kind of, this is where the off ramps are. So seeing the demolition project come in, to me, that's a new cost, right? And that's a new sunk cost. If we go out to bid, we hire demolition experts, they come in and begin all of that, and then we go out to bid and we get our bids in August and we go, we can't afford this or we don't want to do it.
Sure.
Now we've already got the demolition by dragging out the process. Now we've got that cost and we may have, I don't think we're necessarily losing buildings or property we want, but we have committed that much further funds and and project approach. I don't know, does that answer your question? I mean, I think.
Or, yeah, definitely part of it. And then the other part was, is the $50 million range, if we are to build something new, is it possible to do it for, it's not. Yeah, I guess that was my question.
Not all in with the soft costs with the, and may- maybe it is, but not on this site. So it's a new, so you're going to go back to square one and say, okay, we're not going to build into the side of the hill here because we don't want to pay the cost for excavation, but now you're going to start all over and incur all the costs of a new design.
Or or it would just be renovations rather than new, a new building.
Or can I just add something that's relevant to this? We've, we've asked the question, how do we get this number down before? You know, that that's been brought, like, what could we do? And what we hear is not unless you cut into existing programming, what the building is going to represent, what we bought into. So maybe it's worth an exercise to what that would look like and and maybe it's not getting down to a number as much as we may fantasize at 50, but but what does it look like? Because I think, and then I'll I'll table the rest of my, you know, I think the frustration here obviously is that, you know, the more, it, we're kind of losing sight of why we were excited about this building because you're getting a double whammy here. We're both delayed and costs are rising. And then, you know, I think back when Damian said, hey, you know, after the election, we'll have a lot more certainty. That's a good time to go out for bid. Well, I I'm having a hard time thinking we have any certainty in these numbers right now in this current environment with tariffs. Yes, I I, we had the discussion for the rest of the board members, oh, well, what about, you know, where's our steel coming from? Oh, we will buy it from a US source. Well, if it's no longer available internationally, you know, the demand will be up, the supply will be down, and the cost will be greater. So, you know, I can't say that any of us will be able to say we're surprised that all these numbers came in higher because we are in such uncertain times. So, you know, and I think Dr. Bachelor and I were, we were commiserating a little bit about in our leadership meeting about, you know, gosh, we went into the high school project with a great unknown of COVID, and now we're going in, you know, this project feeling a little great unknown. So I think perhaps maybe doing that exercise to say, okay, what, what about this building could we? And I hate to say lose, but is there any, is there, is there a portion that we still can have a beautiful building, but that we might not have everything we originally wanted? And again, one of, I I love, I love Ms. Stern's saying, I don't want to be surprised. One of my, I don't want to be surprised is that the cost of windows and glass is so expensive because we've been saying that from the get go. And I'm just right off the bat, looking at a few ti- a few pictures, which I thought you did a really nice job on some of the buildings in the Glasgow round where we decided to have a footer, right? And I mean, I don't know if I'm header, that, and then it was a little less glass. Well, if you look at those, that art room below, you still have floor to ceiling glass. Is there an opportunity there where we could have headers and have a little less glass or things like that? Have we still gone to that level? And I know you really did a lot of va- value engineering in the last go around, but is there some opportunity that still gives us the integrity of all the light and the windows, but is there some further steps we could take? So again, I don't mean to hijack that, but it's kind of relevant to all that because I I don't want to make it like, you know, for me personally, I don't think it's, it's going to the extreme of of a number that I don't know was ever realistic several years ago and we've just had a market that's gone up. But I do really do appreciate the comments that have gone before that we just keep kind of ignoring it, and then we're going into an unknown environment of of costs. So, um, but then I also recognize that a lot of this money we've spent and we really do need to know what it's going to cost. So, you know, it, but but perhaps there's another step we can do, at least just to evaluate what we'd be giving up because we've said, oh, you're going to cut into programming, but we've never seen what that actually looks like.
What does cutting into programming look like?
Right. So to, so if if you're talking about going from 75 million to 50, that that's a one-third reduction. So, um, and as as Damian mentioned earlier, the exercises that we've done so far have not cut into program. So things like reducing the size of windows, um, you know, making, making those minor tweaks to the building. We we've, we've, we've done that. Now, could we go further? Yes, but that's not millions of dollars, right? That, and and it does start to impact program in terms of the goals of the building, in terms of its, its aesthetic and the way it embraces the, the, the outside landscape. So to cut into program, um, would, it is, is those, those very difficult decisions that, once you make that decision, there's, there's no going back, right? There's, there's other things that are also difficult decisions that affect sort of board district goals for the project. Take the geothermal system for, as an example, you know. That's a way to move the needle in an appreciable way, but it also violates one of the goals of the project. So there are things that we can explore and bring back to you and say, this is, this is, we're not trimming the fat. We're cutting into meat and bone, so to speak, right? So we can do that. To change the shape of the building changes the design, puts us back at the beginning of the land development process and means that we are delaying the project substantially more. And the one thing we can guarantee from that exercise is that it will cost more because now we're, we're seeing inflation, we're seeing escalation. So, so the the process that you're describing that in it to be most effective would be something that we could do in a relatively short period of time. So we don't affect the schedule dramatically, that we're still getting out to bid, close to where we're talking about. But that that things regard, um, that that we can show ways to move the needle appreciably and put some difficult decisions in front of you to to make relative to, uh, to how to get the the building cost down. So, uh, does that answer the question?
It does answer the question, but I just, and this is in fairness to you. I want you to 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 know that it will be an exercise in theoretical numbers because it will, we'll be back to the place of, until we put it out to bid, we won't know, you know, I was just, it's funny, I was just actually looking back at our June of 2022, our feasibility study, kind of back around the time when the board was heavily considering renovating versus, there were a couple of different rebuild options. One was rebuild as, you know, next to our building, one was rebuild in the existing location. And to look back at what those numbers were, I I long for those numbers.
So do we.
Even at the time, you know, we made a decision, it would be about 29 million to do a major, major renovation. And by the way, I don't think that that increased the size of the school to my recollection. And so we were talking about 29 million, really get the school back up to snuff, but we would be still faced with the 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 different conversation that we've had about should we be perhaps rebalancing the size of our three elementary schools? Or, you know, mid 50s, it was never under 50, 57, 55, 57 for the couple of Ithan options. My point is that I looked at that and I thought, I, I, there's no way that we would be doing a substantial renovation of Ithan Elementary, again, without, um, without, uh, even increasing the size of it. I'm like, well, it probably would be up the same 30% that
Right.
new construction is. So we're talking about
A portion.
40 to 42 million. I mean, like, it's just, it's, we just need to understand as as, you know, when you're talking to the person who did not support this particular version, I do understand that the challenge we were, we are, we are faced with as a board, as a community, and as our consultants is that we can only theorize what the numbers are. And I do fully support, Steve, I want to say this. I do fully support your notion that we need to at least go to bid. Yes, that might ultimately be a sunk cost, but we will not otherwise be making any kind of truly informed decision until we go to bid, which is why what's going to take us to get to bid, you know, like that's, you know, so.
Can I ask a question about that, going to bid though? Because
Oh, yeah.
I I would assume that, you know, most contractors that you're going out to bid are watching our meetings and they're, they're listening to the budget, right? So it's kind of a catch 22, you know, do we, do we work towards what we want to be our budget? Because that's what they see and that's what they know that we approved. Or, like you said, Susan, do we go out to bid and and?
Well, we can't go out to bid till we have the land development approvals in good conscience.
Well, well, what I'm saying is, you know, come up with, with a real budget number that we are comfortable with and then go out to bid because they know what that budget number is that we we've approved, right?
Love the way you're thinking because the way this is going is that we're putting it in other people's hands all the time.
We are, we are. And, you know, and I'm not going to repeat everything that everyone said because I do agree with the exception of knowing all that you know about the sewer pro- the, um, permits. So, so, um, and I appreciate Damian's, Damian's, um, small comment about, um, you know, the time does, does give us an advantage that we have a higher number for the Act 34, but we don't want that higher number for Act 34. Let's use that time, that permit process, what, however long it's going to be, to really find more efficiencies and reductions in the cost. This is a huge project and there has to be. I mean, as quickly as we found, you know, money to build the playground and rent and restore the the tennis fields, let's try to find some, some efficiencies in 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 those. I'm not going to get into the nitty nitty and gritty of the details or of the the building, but there is one thing that did, um, that did strike me, and I, I think I did mention this before, but it it just struck me again because as I look at the picture on, by the way, I really appreciate the pictures because I'm a visual person and, um, I really liked seeing those. But it's the picture of the students in the gym, the students in the gym, and I think I mentioned before that I was concerned about the glass around the floor area. What page is that?
It's slide 31.
Very, at the very end, yeah.
It's at, okay.
31.
There it is, yes. So, and again, I, whatever the get, the glass expense is, would it be, and it's not going to be millions, but just, you know, create the wall so that it covers at least the the height of the students and staff that are going to be in there. Because you know what? There are balls that are going to be thrown at that glass. And I don't know how strong th- this glass is, but these are some strong boys that go, and they're not just elementary students that go in there. Some are middle school students and sometimes it's not just a ball that gets thrown in there. So I don't know how you feel about that, but I do feel strongly about that corner, um, that just goes from the floor to, I don't know, all the way up to the ceiling. But if if that could be just a wall where that first, um, ledger, that first grill. Maybe you could revisit that because I wouldn't want a repair cost for that glass. And then to put that gym stalled for any activity, right? Let me see if I have any other questions, but I I reiterate every, I just slightly, when we started, we, we were not at 70, but we approved close to 70 and we were uncomfortable with that. But now we're at 10% above what we started with a year ago. It's a lot. It's a lot. We're, you know, we're not just responsible again for our, our school staff and students, but our taxpayers. So, um, the furniture plan, Susan, you mentioned that. Again, with, with the time that, that we're on waiting for the permits, let's also re, you know, fine tune the furniture so that, you know, they're selected by, you know, the staff and administration properly so that we can hit the ground running when we're ready and that we're not waiting for it. Because I, I don't know how furniture is for buildings like this, but I know furniture, when we order it for residential, can take a long time.
That was not one of the bullet points on the list, but you're correct. We're kind of conceiving that as lumped in with that color schedule conversation. And yes, that, and it is, it's an excellent opportunity to comprehensively look at that design. It wouldn't be ordered that early, but we could at least have the design complete. Yep.
Just to be clear, we can't actually order anything till we've gone out to bid, right?
No, but you could probably get pricing and exactly what kinds of furniture you would like. Stools versus chairs with backs or benches or, you know, just know, and even the paint colors, whatever.
Yeah, well, color was on their list, yeah.
Interior design furniture is, if that could, you know, take, take a look at.
They plan to do an inventory of what things make sense from the current building to move to the new building and what things don't make sense to move from the current building to the new building. So that will impact furniture as well.
Okay. I think that's all I had because everyone else had it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosenblum. Ms. Gerton, you're good? Okay. Dr. Babson.
There's already been, you know, a couple hundred questions asked already. So I'm coming at this from a sort of big picture perspective as well. I'm trying to still sort of grasp some of the details that have, the the ground has shifted and I've, I've, I feel that it shifted. I've been told that it shifted. There are numbers that suggest that it has, but I'm still trying to understand. And without delving too deeply into that particular question, let me just suggest one change, and maybe you could explain it. And I know that you've already explained it in the presentation to some degree, but maybe you could just repeat. So I'm just, I'm, I'm fixated for some reason on the difference between the SiteLogic schematic design estimate, you know, I'm looking at, um, you know, slide 19. At this, that number 56 versus 70, you know, on, on October of 23, and then, um, you know, seven months later, something like that, in May of 24, and the, the difference there, that 14. And the difference there, that 14, 13, 14 grand is just kind of hit me in the face. And I just, could you just walk me through that or just?
You mean million?
Million, yes. Did I say thousand?
I'm okay with 13.
Sorry. Yeah, see? So, yeah, if you could just kind of unpack that one. Again, maybe you've already gone over this, but I just, I just want to.
What's important to keep in mind that, you know, from that 70 million dollars, we brought it back down to 62 million, first of all, through cost reduction measures. So what you really should be comparing is a 56 to the 62. But that's still a 10% increase.
I'm sorry, but that's not the, I'm just asking the question of, I know what the ultimate number is. I'm just asking how it went from that to that. That's just the basic question.
So I was just going to say, the recollection I have, and one of the reasons I was particularly disappointed by these new numbers, is it was a big hit for site costs. I feel like it was $6 million additional for site costs in that jump. And so part of.
It went from 6 to 12.
Right.
That initial, that was in May of last year, May of '24.
Six million additional dollars. And to be clear, we did get it back down to 63 million. 62, 822, you would round up to 63. But we did that by losing some of the things we wanted and by cutting the size by 5,000 square feet.
Right.
And I'm not saying that was wrong. Some of those were things we were happy to cut and we realized there maybe was a better solution. Maybe floor to ceiling glass wasn't ideal in certain rooms, same, I get that. But now we're hearing there's a couple million dollars more. I mean, I think I heard $2 million more in site work.
Yes.
So, the original estimate for site work was 6 and we're up, we've more than doubled that. It's up to 14.
Yes.
And that's, I think, what was most disturbing to me. And to be clear to all those contractors who may come back out and watch this, I love this building. I think it is beautiful. I think it is a great site. And I will not vote for it if it comes in above our budget. If it comes in too high, Radnor is an affluent district, I get that. Everybody thinks we have unlimited pockets. We do not. And this is not the time with tariffs on steel and lumber, tariffs on imports, which is where a lot of that furniture may come from, for us to just plan to spend lots and lots of money at a time when a lot of people are losing their jobs. I know you know this, but I'm saying it for anybody who's watching this a couple months from now, bidding on the project. This is not a done deal if it doesn't come in at an amount that this board thinks is responsible. I hear it from a couple other people, I'm not polling, I just, I think that's a reality. I think we need to know that people, and that when it comes in, the contractor who bids on it better not come in with a million change orders like we've had in the past because that does not fly either. So it better be somebody with a lot of integrity who wants to come in and bid on a project honestly. So, you're, sorry, that site work was the big number, sorry.
It's okay.
But no, but that site work got me really angry because that is the big number change, I think.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's fine.
I lost track.
No, 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 it's all good. And again, you know, I'm coming at this, I work in higher ed, you know, I, you know, education is sort of, you know, this is an educational project, right? So, I mean, I'm just kind of setting the tone here of, kind of talk to me like I'm six here, you know? How did it go from 56 to 70? I mean, I just, it's a kind of straightforward question.
I think it's just, you know, it's a combination of further understanding of the scope, further understanding of the needs of the district and desires of the district, further refinement of the design, and then better understanding of market conditions. Is, you know, the, trying to get a handle on what's going on with pricing in the market is, you know, we've talked about it's changing rapidly, it's difficult to keep up with. But I think it's more just a development of the design, better understanding of the needs of the, needs and desires of the district and what it's going to take to meet that.
That sounds fair. The other general concern I have is sort of, and again, this is fairly, you know, straightforward stuff here, but we're looking at these deduction alternates. I, again, this is just a simple statement here. I guess I'm just concerned that, I just don't want, how do I say this? Again, fairly simple idea. If we're going to pay kind of, if we're going to go all in on this design and we're not going to, you know, to use the metaphor, cut down to the meat and bone, if we're just trimming the fat and we're keeping the general concept, I would just hope that we're not losing things that are substantive. And I know that these alternates are thoughtfully conceived here. I know that there's a lot of thought that was put into that. But it's just a general concern that I have. And the kind of global feeling here is, okay, we started here, you know, we estimated here, now it's up here and now we're kind of cutting back. And in that cutting process, we're like losing quality. And, you know, it's, again, it's just a general sense of things. So, if you want to comment on that, that would be great.
No, that's a very valid concern. And that's, you're talking about the bidding strategy and that's why they are alternates. Because, again, has been said a couple of different times, this is an estimate. It's not meant to be the low bid, right? It's meant to be, you know, a conservative estimate. And so our hope is that somewhere within the range of the alternates and the estimate, that that's where the bids are going to fall. And we don't want the district to lose value out of the building because something was cut and we don't have the opportunity to bring it back in. So it creates these safety valves for what, depending on the bidding outcome, so that you have the opportunity to bring things back in or make those difficult decisions to say, do we want a building with Torazo? Or do we want a building, right? And so that, just to use that example since you raised it. So, it gives us the opportunity to make those decisions that have a life cycle cost impact on the building, but don't have a, can we open the building and get students in to learn impact, right? So, and so that's why they're alternates, right?
Sure, fine. And I'll just say one more thing, you know? We want to build a new school in 2025, so it's going to cost a lot of money, okay? So that's the basic fact. On the other hand, as Lon has said and other people have said, we live in this community and we have a fiduciary responsibility and we're the people that are going to have to answer the questions, not only to our neighbors, but our constituents of, are you really, you know, dotting your i's and crossing your t's when you're reviewing these documents? So, leave you with that. Thank you.
You're up.
I think I've said it, I just, you know, I want to kind of end on a positive note. I mean, I also want to say, I do believe this is a beautiful building. And I think we made the decision not to renovate for a good reason. And I know Dr. Bachelor and the administrative team, back in, I believe in May, when we were first faced with, you know, new numbers, went through that exercise, right? And we landed once again in, this is a beautiful building. We have a need for this, we have, we believe we have a need and that it makes sense to build. Yes, there's a question of the site, you know, it's been a longstanding question. We also made decisions that, you know, you know, I reference this a lot. That, Steve, you said, this is the best place to put this building, you know? And we asked that question again, even in light of these site costs. I do believe it's a little bit of a misleading or fantasy to believe that if we just knock down the current building and erect it, we wouldn't have those costs. I think our property presents challenges with slopes. We would be building a bigger building. I think we would end up with new challenges. And particularly as we went through the exercise relocating too. So I don't want to like paint that we made a mistake in the decisions we've made. So, but, you know, for all the reasons, I think that, you know, we have to, you know, we have to just know that we're scrutinizing every dollar here. And that, you know, we might end up in a position where we have to make some hard decisions. And, you know, maybe right now is not the right time to actually put it in paper because we need to see what it costs to say what the meat and bone, what we'd be cutting into. But I hope we're thinking about it because, you know, the reality could be that we don't like what we get. And so, that's, I just, but on a positive, I really do, I don't want to, you know, I just think maybe this is just what happens in the process. Plus, we're building at a really difficult time. I mean, I mean, anybody who's done a renovation project at home, anyone who's looking for a new home, look at the escalate, look at the cost today. But, you know, we do, like you said, we have a responsibility to the community and we've just got to know that we're leaving no stone unturned before, you know, we make a very big vote. Thanks.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, no, no, go ahead. I have a couple of questions, but go ahead.
What would be the, what is the expectation from the design team when bids will come in? So if bids go out in June, bids will come in by August, by end of July?
Yes.
So the end of July bids come in? And then we would be looking for the board to accept or reject those in the month of August? So that means we'd have a facilities meeting and a board meeting and we're making decisions on whatever that number is, whether to proceed, what alternates to do, what alternates not to do, all within a one or two week time period?
Potentially, yes. A month, well, month, yeah.
So when you say month, how does it work out to be a month?
We could schedule into July to. Yeah.
The question is, do we need a July meeting? The board doesn't typically.
I'm thinking, meeting wise, when you say a month though, the meetings, we have a monthly facilities meeting. We have a monthly board meeting. So between one facilities committee meeting and then a board meeting, we'd be looking at the board to make the decision on all of the alternates, to make a decision on not only the alternates, whether to accept the overall estimates too, and all of that.
Those are choices that we still have to schedule those and define that duration, whatever works for the district.
Can I have a quick question just because of the way you said that? Is there a, is there a legal timeframe from the time you put out bids and accept bids back to when you must take action on them or the contractors can pull those bids?
Correct. So the bids have a lifespan.
Right.
Which is, again, defined within the bidding documents. You know, it's typically 45 days, so a month and a half. It could be defined as longer, it's sometimes as 60. You know, there's, and oftentimes, there's also a clause in there if there's a delay due to an authority approval, that we have the right to hold those bids even longer. So those are decisions that can be made as the contracts are put together. And if we need a different cycle of review and approval, you know, that's decisions that are yet to be set in stone.
Okay, but if we don't approve the bids in August, the likelihood, we're hoping to break ground in October. So if they're not approved in August, we would, then if we're approving in September, we're now breaking ground in November.
Correct, yes, yes. So then the question would be, can we, can we move that bidding timeframe forward so that it gives more time? But again, relative to the, to the, you know, approvals that we're waiting for, we need to be strategic about that.
One of the things I'm hearing from the board tonight is the comments about, what are the alternatives and why can't this be lower? But then also the comment on the reality of, we don't really know until we go out to bid. But once we go out to bid, then our options, once they return, once we have those bids, our options are, you know, to accept one of the bids or to reject those and possibly not move forward. And I'm hearing, you know, comments that, you know, that depending where those bids are, we may not be moving forward. And if we're not moving forward, then we are looking at going back to, what are we doing? Are we redesigning? Are we renovating? What are those options? And what I'm also hearing from you is it doesn't make sense to discuss those options right now until we get to the time of bids, until we get to those bids is when that makes sense to discuss those.
We won't be able to make decisions on them, but I wouldn't say that we couldn't, and I think this has been discussed too, is all those pages with the cost reduction options, with the yellow highlights, there's a desire to vet those a little bit more. And there can be a prioritization process as part of that. So we can position ourselves to be prepared with some prioritizations so that when the bids are received, it, we're kind of, we front-end loaded some of the discussion and so we're perhaps better prepared to act on those, if you follow what I'm saying. In other words, we don't have to wait to discuss the prioritization or the value that the board places on alternates until we've received bids.
So the next few months, coming months, we could schedule facilities meetings where we review some of these so that we're prepared ahead of time for what these all mean as we're getting ready for that time period when we receive the bids. As to the question about what programming can we cut? And I think you answered the question, if it's, you know, if you're changing the shape of the building, you're going, that's redesign. We can, are there other programming cuts? If we could also look at that as we prepare for these alternates and discussion of these alternates, are there other things that we should be looking at? Could we, does that make sense between now and August?
Right, that would be obviously decisions that would involve the administration and kind of making those hard decisions. Absolutely, that can happen concurrently with those other conversations.
Go ahead, Ms. Lau, no, that's fine.
So I really appreciate Dr. Bachelor's summary, which I think is very helpful. I would just want to add and reiterate Ms. Rosenbloom's point is that, you know, given all of our meetings and public discussions so far, have we already left a record where we really shouldn't be surprised with where the bids are going to come in, given where, you know, we currently are, I guess, with our own numbers, right? Because it's all available to bidders. So, you know, I guess, is that a fair expectation? That we shouldn't really expect any bids to come in dramatically lower than the numbers that we're already showing?
No, that, I would not say that's accurate. So this is the world we live in. It's the public bid arena where everything is on the table. Anybody can watch these conversations. And no, bids come in low all the time. Maybe not so much recently, but, you know, our firm's been around for 60 years. And, you know, the estimate by design is meant to be conservative and it's very common that the bids come in lower than the estimate. And I'll let these gentlemen speak to that as well.
When we're putting these estimates together, our goal, and we preach this again and again in our, in our company, is, our goal is to be the second bidder. We don't want to be the low bidder. Because with a low bidder, that means that we were too, we were too low. So we want, typically, we like to be within, you know, 2% or 3% of the bids. Sometimes it's a little more than that, but, you know, we, our goal was to be second bidder. So hopefully they come in a little bit under. To expect they're going to come in $10 million under would be very unusual to expect them to, for them to come in 20, to expect them to come in $20 million under is probably, is not reasonable. But, you know, you could see, you know, them come in a decent amount under these numbers potentially.
And we understand the estimating is based on industry standards, the square footage and those pieces. So could I ask the design team to think about a schedule between now and August? What I don't want to see happen is August come and then our design team look at us and say, well, board, you're holding us up now. You're not making a decision in August. So a schedule that gives us the opportunity to be as informed as possible so that we are prepared to make a decision maybe in August or also be prepared that maybe it's a decision in September. And I think the other thing we haven't emphasized enough in this process is, everything is estimates. You know, we are estimating timeline and as best as possible and it adjusts and changes. We are estimating cost as best as possible. We are drilling down and getting more detailed. And as we get more detailed, that's why it continues to adjust and change. So these are all estimates as we move forward. But to build in that time, because I think there's, there will be significant discussion about whether or not, you know, we move forward or, you know, with this project or not.
So I have a couple of questions, but I have more than a couple. I'm not going to ask you to answer all of them this evening unless it's really fast and easy. I know we'll connect, but I want to ask them here so other people have a chance to think about them and maybe that's. about them and maybe they'll come up at the next facilities meeting and we'll figure that out. A couple of things came up when you were looking at the, and it's not in order, it's just how I scribbled it on the page because I ran out of space. I have occasion to be in a new building currently on a regular basis and there's a construction site right next to it. And the fencing is starting to tip some days with all the wind we've got recently. We've been told you can't walk near it and some of that's because it's got fabric on it. I want everyone to be really mindful. I know you are, but this is, these are children on this site. They don't follow instructions as well as adults who, by the way, don't follow them. I walk along that fence all the time. So please, 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 whatever fabric you're putting on or other, like, keep in mind, we do get high winds, it's up on a hill, you need to be planning for the safety of the people who are around there. I know you care about safety, but just.
The quick answer is, and watch Mr. Moore smile, pole-driven fence. Not, not something that's.
I was just going to say, it can't be just held down with these big cement bags or sandbags.
Not held down, not.
Okay. So there's a cost to it, but it's going to be a safe fence.
And frankly, there is very little cost difference between the two.
Okay. Good to know. What's a Jersey barrier? Is that like a baller?
The concrete barriers that you see along the highway?
The movable ones.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. The tree removal, it, just, there's a lot of different tree lines kind of sketched in on this schedule. It's not clear to me if all of those little tree lines are trees that are being removed or if there are batches somewhere. And if there's a meeting I missed where it's discussed what trees come down, it would be helpful to understand. I think that, you may not know this, Walt, everybody else here does, Radnor loves its trees. Radnor cares deeply about its trees. If you have gotten shade commission approval, I do think that's meaningful, but it would be still helpful, I think, for some of us to just have a sense of where the trees are going to be disappearing.
We should, we should provide, we should provide a slide or two that shows, here's new trees, here's a little bit of that.
I'm sorry, did you get recommendation at Shadtree for approval? Oh, good. Thank you.
It would be helpful next time. I don't want to keep everybody here tonight, but when there are changes in the renderings, if we, even just a little red box around it or something, there was a, maybe I misunderstood it. I thought in the opening conversation, you said something about some of the alternates were being reflected in the pictures. If that wasn't the case, okay. I have, from a scheduling standpoint, would be helpful to understand, especially given people's vacation schedules, if we need a meeting in July or if we need two meetings in August to stay on schedule. Alternatively, why are we just not going out to bid later when it can be on a schedule that matches our school year calendar and what we've talked about in the past? And maybe the answer is because we don't want to wait any longer to go out to bid because costs just keep going up and other things will get in the way, but I just.
The question is, is there some advantage to waiting longer to go out to bid?
We were supposed to go out to bid last October. Is there a reason we aren't just going out to bid this October?
Because when we put the shovel in the ground.
Well, right, but we were going out to bid in October so that we could get stuff started over spring break. Is there a reason we aren't? And I'm not advocating for it, I just want to understand it because I think it's a question we'll get asked. And especially given kind of, there were seasonal aspects to the plan that I remember understanding. It made sense to do this in this season and this and that season. And, you know, winter's unpredictable and I just worry about it. So I just want to make sure people have thought carefully about the appropriate timing. I got that answer. I have concerns about alternates that are going to increase our long-term costs. I think we had this conversation ad nauseam about Torazo. We don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. So a million dollars this year may save us a lot of money over years, may save us staffing costs, it may save us machinery costs, it may save us having to rip up and replace whole floors. So the same thing with like walls, right? Are they going to have to be, if they were supposed to be eight feet and they are now only four feet and children in elementary school are taller and taller than when I was there and they're all deciding the best game ever is to slap the wall right above where the tile is and now we have to repaint every summer instead of every couple summers. I just want everybody to be mindful about what decisions are being made that way. I didn't, there was a reference to Sprow Road improvements. That's, I think, where our lower, where the houses currently have a driveway. That's not, we, I think years ago, we gave, it seems like years ago, we gave up actually having an access point there.
That references Sprow and Clyde.
Oh, okay. Okay. Are there improvements that need to be made there? I mean, if the.
We're in negotiations with the township on that.
There, there were some comments that came back on the review letters with regards to some of the improvements that the township has put on their plan. They've recognized some of the improvements that PennDOT has recognized and recommended as well. Right now, they are not currently part of this project or, or we're not being told that we have to do those. There's, so that's where the kind of the conversation behind the scenes between the district and the township is taking place.
Okay, okay.
And we haven't given up the existing entrance that we have at Roberts Road and Sprow. We've not, we're not giving that up.
Okay, perfect. I think that was it. Hold on, let me just make sure I didn't. I just want to say, I noticed this and I'm guessing he noticed this from the back row, but the big savings was that we, the big, the million dollar savings in this budget was because Mr. Pauling took us out for financing and originally it was budgeted $2 million and it came in at a million dollar of cost. So thank you, Mr. Pauling from the back. I know it doesn't sound like it because I'm rushing and I'm frustrated. I do really appreciate all the work you're doing. I appreciate that this is not easy. I appreciate it's not easy when you have a group of people who are frustrated. But I, I, I don't want to repeat of the high school where we go out to bid in uncertain times and that everyone's shocked. I, I can't go out to bid and have this project come in five, 10% above what you think it is. Like, I, I just can't. So whatever we can do to make sure contractors understand that, whatever we can do to manage our own expectations, right? If, if you need to tell me, Sarah, give up on the Torazo floors unless you're willing to put it into, you know, take the money from someplace else, you just need to say that. It's about being honest with everybody here.
Part of what we're doing is talking to a lot of contractors now who are very interested in bidding the job. So the best thing that we can do to lower costs is get a lot of competition. And again, we said it before, the fact that this is a new building is going to generate competition on its own, but what we're doing to talk to contractors early is, I mean, there are contractors that want to bid the job right now. But.
Are we making it any less, I'm sorry, are we making it any less appealing by breaking out the demolition piece?
No.
It's insignificant.
Insignificant.
In the plan for coming months, can we also, before we go out to bid, talk about, and maybe we can check with our solicitor about what we can discuss in public versus it's a contract. I'm not sure if it's anything we can talk at exact, probably here, but discuss what are the, what are we putting into these bid specifications and what are the things that we are considering in putting into the bid specifications to not only protect the district but also to limit change orders, to hold things on time? What are some of those options?
You're having some of those discussions even now.
And that would be great to share with the board and we could talk to our solicitor about when we can, what's the appropriate time for us to discuss since it's a contract? We could discuss those.
One of the best ways to avoid change orders is to make the documents as complete and accurate as possible. And one of the benefits of this additional time is giving us some more time for our team to review the drawings and Steve's team to review the drawings and refine the drawings and make sure we've got everything taken care of. But that is one of the best ways to avoid changes in constructions, just make sure you got the absolute best set of documents possible.
And a big part of this project is that, again, we have to bring Phil onto the site at the high school and I'm sorry to have anybody relive it. It was.
Please just don't.
Different site. So we expect architects not to be perfect, but to do rather well with their design of a new building, which means there, there could be change orders for things, but those omissions in the documents are, are pretty narrow. And if you take omissions of 2% on $50 million of building, that's budgeted for in, in our, it's more than budgeted for in, in our soft costs. What we also want to do is take away as much as we can of the unknowns about the site. And we're going to take a lot of time to make sure that the site work drawings are improved as much as we can as well because I have a lot of confidence in what's being drawn architecturally with the building and the firms that are doing that. But because the site design was behind, I want to get that site design up to, up to that high level as well.
And just for the board, would it be helpful in one of these upcoming meetings that if we went back and just either summarize quickly the decisions that were made in 2022 or just reminder, maybe we could just do a separate reminder to board members, go back and look at some of those? You know, just as, what were, you know, came up tonight, and I won't be repetitive of it, but maybe it might be helpful to see, you know, what were those decisions versus renovation and build and why did we choose build? And I think it was very sound, you know, discussions and thinking at the time. Would that be helpful to include a quick summary of that in a future meeting?
I think it would be helpful to get a summary of that. I'm not sure we need to have, take up meeting time for it. I think it is something people could read. It seems like a lot of it should be on slides.
Yeah, I agree. And I, you know, being the one who raised it, I only meant to convey that those numbers are no longer, the renov, comparing what we had as an image of the renovation numbers to what we are now looking at as construction is completely unfair. I, I want you to know that I recog, that's what I was, let me be clear, that's what I was trying to convey to the board. We can't compare that renov, we made, we made a good decision in 2022. I stand by that decision based on the information we had at the time and I continue to believe that. I just think, you know, we need the bid numbers. That's, that's what we need. That's what I was trying to convey about that. But, but I think it might be helpful.
We could send out the.
Kind of.
Yeah, we could send out the dates.
As a memo or whatever.
As a memo, yeah. We could, we could do that, the history, yeah. That'd be fine.
I think it would be really helpful to have, you mentioned Dr. Bax, so being prepared for the alternates, be prepared for the bids. So if we had some front-loading of ways to think about all of these alternates and think about the bids and how they might come in before we actually get there so that we're not surprised? The less amount of surprise, the better. That would be helpful.
And it'll also give you a sense of board priorities.
Yeah, I would say, having been through this before, the administration is very good and I expect SiteLogic will be good and Mr. Breslin certainly, sorry, Mr. Barron certainly is. They will make recommendations for us on the alternates. I mean, it ultimately falls to us, but they will say like, look, here's what we think you should go with and here's why and, and here's, you know, here are your three packages and, I mean, they're going to be, it sounds like we have enough alternates that like the numbers will fly all over the place and Lydia will really lose track.
Well, as not being on the facilities committee, I have some holes in my understanding of the numbers. So it would be helpful to, I actually do think, to have a recap of where those numbers came from and then what to expect for when we do look at bids, what that might mean to the whole project.
No, I think, I think you're right. And I, I will confess, I think some of my frustration, the, the last project we did, I sat on the steering committee and I sat on facilities, I chaired facilities for like two, so I was very well aware of all the little details. And so I, I don't have as much insight into this some days and that's, and I have a little bit more. That's, yeah, so we're getting there.
Awesome. You're going to break.
I wasn't fishing for compliments.
Sir, can I just ask one other question?
Yes, please.
We're talking about a March meeting to determine whether or not we move forward with early demolition. How much is that? Because that could be a sunk cost that if we decide not to move forward, it doesn't make sense to spend.
We'll be preparing. I haven't, you haven't broken those costs out, but I would, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I think that would be important information to know if we want to spend that not knowing whether or not we're going to move forward.
Well, but also it may be one of those, we can go out to bid and then decide we don't like the bids and be told whether or not the bids match the estimates that we're told. So rather than quote a number now to the point people have had before, they know what they think demolition should cost and they're going to go out to bid and if the numbers come in and they don't recommend it, they'll tell us. Have we fully exhausted this? Have we fully exhausted everyone in the room?
No, I want to thank you for having this. I actually, this is, this meeting, thank you for being here. This meeting actually aligns with a, a goal and a priority we stated as a board is that when we have big decisions to make, we need to spend this time together as a board. And this would have been very difficult to do as part of our full business meeting next month. So yes, it was a long evening. Yes, it was a lot to take in and I'm, I'm grateful for it that we took the time to do this because this will set us up to make our best decisions down the road. So thank you.
And I, you know, I don't know that we said that in the beginning, but just for the public that do watch, you know, this was our normally scheduled facilities committee meeting. And in order for the full board to be able to participate and ask questions, because we have a committee structure, we created the special meeting. That's, no, I know, just want to explain to anyone who's watching why we did that so that everyone could be here. So yes, I think it is helpful, the moments we do this when we have important initiatives to turn it into a special meeting so everybody can ask questions. So thank you and thank you for board members for adjusting your schedules to be here.
And, and it sounds like there may be another one or two of these coming up, so please, we'll make sure we let you know, but try to keep your Tuesday facility nights open. Okay, seeing nothing else, the one board announcement I wanted to make is that typically our, our school, our full board meeting is next Tuesday night on February 25th. And typically it would take place at the Township Administration Building, but because of a scheduling conflict, it will not. It will be back in this room. So for anyone watching, we're in the Radnor, we're in the, sorry, we're in the garden suite of the administrative building for Radnor Township.
Garden level.
No, garden suite's so much funnier to say. And with that, we are adjourned. Oh, no, I need a motion.
A motion.
May I get a, well, I forgot. It wasn't in here. May I get a motion? I get a motion from Susan.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second from Ms. Solomon. All in favor? Thank you.